Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, February 1, 2021, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. Call this meeting to order. Wouldn't mind standing. We'll have Pastor Lemay come up and pray over us, and then we'll say the pledges. Let's pray. O merciful heavenly Father, your power is infinite and your wisdom infallible. Order our ways that nothing may either hinder us or discourage us, nor prove to be an obstacle in the progress of this city and your cause. Stand between us in all strife, that no evil befall us, no sin corrupt our gifts, zeal or attainments. May we follow duty and not be given to foolish whims. In your mercy, grant that we should not labor at anything which you will not or cannot bless, but that we might serve you in all things that you have put into our hands to do. Let us dwell in your most secret place under the shadow of your wing, where we may find safe refuge and protection from the arrows that fly by day, the pestilence that walks in the darkness, the strife of tongues, the malice of ill will, the hurt of unkind talk, the snares of wealth, the perils of youth, the temptations of midlife, the mourning of old age, and even the fear of death. We depend entirely upon you for support, counsel, and consolation. So uphold us, uphold these councilmen, the mayor, and those who govern this city by your spirit, and grant us that we might walk in your ways. Let us not lean on our own understanding, on our own judgment, and so deceive ourselves, but in all our ways let us acknowledge you and uphold the right and the justice that pleases you, and seek the wisdom that is only from you and from your word. And so we offer all these things into your hands, our own selves, and we pray for these deliberations and these men and women, that you would grant your blessing to them for the good of this city and that you may be honored. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. Okay, to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to, applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. I have one card. David Allen.
Your honor, your honor. And I'm the barkeeper.
Okay, you got one right. This is a good one. You recognize this guy's picture?
I do.
That's right. The Gulag Archipelago. This is Alexander Solzhenitsyn, who they read his mail. Does anybody read our mail? Well, email, of course, they had to read snail mail in those days, 1945. This guy had guns. Well, he was actually a Russian Army officer fighting the Nazis actively, you know, getting bombarded as they were pushing towards Germany. But they read a letter of his towards, sent to a relative in the Ukraine that was disparaging towards Stalin. They grabbed him and other Army officers that had done similar things, tore his insignia off, sat him out there in the icy cold with the other officers that had been, you know, debranded, and sent him off to the Gulag for 10 years. This is what communist regimes do when they get in power. Something to watch out for. Okay, so today, just briefly, I'd like to talk about John Brennan, who had been, has been formerly head of the CIA, and his prediction on January 20th, which was at the afternoon after the new government was installed. He voted for a communist president at least once before he was hired in the mid-'70s. When he was on duty in Saudi Arabia, he joined the most radical of the cults, the Wahhabiists, which even, you know, has most of the Saudis pretty worried, those groups out there, that group in particular. He used the words "the Biden team" in this, and he said, "They are moving with laser-like fashion to uncover," which probably means to spy on, "unholy alliances of religious extremists." What's that, you know, pro-life Christian or something? Religious extremists, bigots, racist, nativist, what's that, a native-born Texan? And libertarians, oh my God. And he said the Department of Defense is going to join in this hunt, and all the intel agencies and law enforcement to root out this insidious threat. Now, you know, if I said that, you could laugh at it, but this is a guy who's not kidding around, and this is, you know, a few minutes after the inauguration. So, you know, what happens in this case? False flags, like out at the Capitol on January 6th, right? Antifa comes out, riots, they've got a bunch of basically peaceful people out there that really were peaceful. They weren't burning buildings and stuff like the mostly peaceful riots all summer. They get sucked into the Capitol, you know, low amount of police protection, unusually low, that's a little suspicious, but whatever. And then they start arresting people that just walked into the Capitol. So, thank you. Anyway, false flags, arrests, and it ends with Alexander Solzhenitsyn example, but hopefully not. So here's the point, it's just to, you know, keep on your guard. If any thing looks suspicious, don't participate in it, and keep an eye on these people because they mean business, they're in power, and false flags are always a possibility. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Item five, work session, excuse me. Update on public safety building expansion and Fire Station Number Two reconstruction projects. City Engineer Hill Arias. How you doing tonight, Hill?
I'm doing well. Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. I'm here to give you a brief update on where we're at on both the Fire Station Number Two replacement and the public safety building expansion project. So if you'll recall, back in July 2020, the City Council approved a reimbursement resolution to allow for advanced funding of up to $1 million for expenditures related to the public safety building expansion and the Fire Station Number Two renovation or reconstruction. And that was ahead of the bonds being issued. Architectural and engineering for both projects were begun in September 2020 with the firm of PGAL. Preliminary floor plans and exterior elevations have been sent to the city for review as part of this current programming phase. As these floor plans are preliminary, I'd like to mention also that they are subject to revision at this stage. So the architect is, right now, he's developing plans, and eventually, we're going to have a floor plan that's going to fit for both projects, their respective budgets. So here we have an exterior perspective of the proposed Fire Station Number Two. As you can see on the outside there, you have three apparatus base as proposed by the latest layout that we've had sent to us. So here you can see how the site plan comes together and a floor plan, how they're shaping out to be. The track that this fire station sits on is kind of small, so we're going to need to basically use every single inch, square inch of that land there. One of the highlights that I wanted to note on the site plan is the gate there to the south of that building there. That'll lead to the parking and the training facilities in the back. And also wanted to point out that there's going to be room, once this is all said and done, for a fire truck to be driven and turn around back in the back there. So here's a close-up of the proposed building. This floor plan is the result of a needs assessment that was provided by PGAL after meeting with the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department, the Fire Marshal Office, and city engineering folks also. So as you can see, the floor plan provides for dorm rooms, a day room, a kitchen, and a mug of other rooms as well. We still have a little bit of work to do before they can finish up this conceptual floor plan. So this is the first iteration of the floor plan where we've been provided with the cost estimate. Right now, we're sitting at $3.7 million for the construction of this building, and the project budget is $4 million. But that includes soft costs like architectural and engineering services. Right now, we're projecting about, maybe about $400 million, or not $400 million, $400,000 in soft costs, so that puts our project at about $4.1 million right now without a contingency. And this does not include a replacement burn building, which would cost about $650,000. There's a little bit of work to do there, but we're in the ballpark of where we need to be. Didn't want to point out that this is a conservative estimate that they sent to us, but it's a good starting point to where we can start working with a construction manager at risk to help refine the cost here. So later tonight, council will have a contract for consideration for a CMAR for this project. The city, the architect, and the CMAR will work together as a team moving forward, and will develop a guaranteed maximum price, which will set the final price tag for this
Before Hill goes on to the next project, I want to remind council, this is the same process we undertook when we did Fire Station One behind the public safety building with the construction manager at risk. It ended up providing a far better product for us and keeping us within budget as we had hoped, so we're proposing to do the same with these two projects.
And now we have in-house project managers also to...
Yes, we have in-house project managers as well. So this brings us to the public safety building. The work on this project is ongoing with the architect. In your backup material, you have a current layout and a conceptual layout, which is based on feedback that the architect has gotten from the PD, Fire Marshal, and Municipal Court. We're not quite where we need to be cost-wise before we turn the architect loose on the development of the plans and specifications on this project. So that's something that we've got coming up here in the immediate future. City staff's already working hard to evaluate the initial floor plan that they've given us, and we're going to ensure that the needs are met and that any necessary renovation to the existing building is balanced with the addition of any new floor space as well. So also on the agenda tonight is a CMAR for this project as well. So before the ink even dries, and I was visiting with them back there a little while ago, before the ink even dries, we're going to be engaging them to help get some hard numbers on paper and help get this project to its final form. And that is my update for tonight. As we move forward, the architect will have a final programming presentation for you guys, hopefully within the next month or two. So we've got that to look forward to.
These guys are from Christiansen?
Yes, these guys are from Christiansen, and back in the back...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see y'all back there. Core, you're from Core?
They're from Core.
Which project is which? Remind me of that. Okay, you got the hard one back there. You guys got to figure out how to get us a burn building for basically nothing, because some College of Mainland guys burned our burn building down. Go figure. Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, Mo.
So will there be any capacity, you know, issues at the police station while they're adding on to the building? Will they still have all the usable space that they need, or...
That's yet to be determined to what level of capacity we're going to have, how far we can project out. The first iteration of the floor is intended to be a 50-year build-out, but we're yet to see just exactly how far we can project out what needs are being met here.
I will add that we will not disrupt services at all during this process. It will be a little different and taken used to, but we'll still be able to provide emergency services during this process.
I think I heard back there, is there movement, you and Bruce?
Yeah, we have.
You and Teyor set it out, right? There's extra space there. I mean, when there's rubber plug...
The same applies, though, for the fire station. We will have a presence on the south end of town while the new station's being built to make sure that we have all of our needs met throughout the process.
Well, thanks, Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the update. We have a public hearing that I'll hold off till 7 o'clock in case anybody's racing to get here.
Would you like to tackle the construction manager at risk item since both firms are here?
There we go. Thank you, sir. Point me in the right direction here. It says 9A. Okay, just discussion and possible action regarding approval of an agreement with Christiansen Building Group LLC regarding pre-construction services for the Fire Station Number Two reconstruction and training field upgrades project and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more questions, anybody? All in favor? That was easy. All right, item B, discussion, possible action regarding approval of an agreement with Core Construction regarding pre-construction services for the public safety building expansion project and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further questions? All in favor? I saw your hand. Thank you all for being here tonight. Look forward to working with you all.
We can do the CDC appointment if y'all want to in the consent...
I'll do that. I'll do that. Item C, discussion, possible action regarding an appointment to the following board committees and commissions. Community and Economic Development appoint Susan Azamakis to an unexpired term expiring July 2022 to replace Thomas Hinkley, who resigned from CEDC when appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
I make the motion, we approve the consent agenda?
One second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Moving right through this.
Communications from mayor and council, maybe?
See. Hey, y'all want to communicate, communication from mayor and council?
Sure.
Brett, nothing?
I would like to say, I think it's cool, and I'll say this years from now, but the fact that we have clergy in our community that come up and pray for us before every meeting is huge. I can't tell, you know, the public how much I appreciate that, that I think that, you know, our country will not be in a better place and would be in a much better place if everybody took God in consideration and everything that they did. And so it's one of the best parts about being up here, so I really appreciate that.
And Pastor Lemay looked at us last month, I think, met a pastor who was preaching to the choir there, but Pastor Lemay looked around and saw that we needed it, and he directed it right at us.
Absolutely. I don't have anything, I'm good.
Trish? Sure.
To, I'm sure, on behalf of all of us, offer our condolences to Kay Cory's husband, Brian Cory, who served on our library board, and he passed away this weekend, and she's on, she's a huge volunteer on KFB, and so I know that we're all, you know, sad about that.
I'd like to welcome back fellow council member Steve Rocky. Glad you're here.
And happy birthday, Sally.
Yeah.
I'm going backwards, I'll be 29 in some months.
Well, I am very happy to be back. For those of you who don't know, I did get diagnosed with COVID. I ended up in the hospital for 12 days, and it's left me with pneumonia, which everybody tells me takes months to get over. I'm very impatient about it, but I am, you know, inching along and keeping myself busy. When I was in the hospital, it felt like I had been thrown in a well and didn't know how to get out. And you're in a room that's got this blower in it, so it's positive pressure, and they got a plastic zip door on it, and the only human beings you see are dressed in all the gear, and they're waking you up in the middle of the night to give you shots. And so many people, including everybody up here, called me, texted me, responded to Facebook posts, and you, when you're in that kind of isolation, any contact, any contact at all, is just precious beyond belief. So to everybody who reached out to me, and I just can't tell you how much it meant to me. So I'm good to be here, I'm going to try to, you know, every day get 1% better, you know, try to be able to do a little bit more. So I'm very, very, very happy I'm sitting here. I got to tell you, I was touch and go for a while, touch and go. In fact, my own doctor called me, second day I was in the hospital, and I could hear the worry in his voice. So it's really, really nice to be here. Thank you.
Great to have you back, Steve, really. Yes. Well, I'll just use my couple of minutes to say something about our city secretary there, Belinda Welsh. For those of you that don't know, just announced her retirement March, we got another shot at her here in our March meeting, she'll be here until March 19th, but Belinda, I just want to publicly say, we are going to miss you, and you're going to be tough shoes to fill, and things are going to be, you know, it's going to be a while before we get you, that's for sure, a long while. I don't know if you wanted, you can have some of my time if you'd like to say something.
Well...
You know how to work that microphone?
I don't know. I'm used to having the button, the light-up button. Well, I appreciate those words. It's been, it's been an interesting career, and I'm very grateful for all the people that have come and gone, even the difficult ones, because you learn from them all, the good and the ones that are just teaching lessons. But it's been a good career. I love, I've loved being at Friendswood, and I appreciate all your support and your kind words, I appreciate it. I'm going to miss you all, but I'll be around for a bit, so holler if you need me.
Well, we're going to miss you for sure.
Thank you.
I think it's close enough to 7 o'clock. Can I get an amen? I will put on my glasses here. Public hearing to receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding A, proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinance to require less dense residential uses in higher dense residential districts to still meet the district regulations of the less dense district by amending Section 7.B R2 and R3 MFR Low Residential General Purpose Description, Section 7.C R4 MFR Medium Residential General Purpose and Description, and Section 7.D R5 MFR High Residential General Purpose and Description, and to amend Section 7.P 6 permitted use table to allow less dense residential uses in higher dense residential districts by defining residential uses in the table. Tell me what I just said.
Good evening. Yes, I will try to summarize that in English language, I guess, a little easier. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did have their meeting and public hearing and consideration of this item on January 14th, and it was a unanimous vote, 6 to 0, we had one commissioner absent, to approve the proposed amendments, which are basically to allow less residential uses in higher dense residential districts. So up until 2014, the single-family residential use was allowed in multifamily low-density district. In 2014, we removed a bunch of, well, all the residential uses from the permitted use table, and because there are descriptions of those uses in another part of the ordinance, inadvertently, we removed the cumulative zoning, which allows this to take place. So we have about four blocks of multifamily low-density that have a lot of single-family homes on them, and so when we changed the ordinance, that created a lot of nonconformities. So changing it back will correct those nonconformities. There's also several of those lots that are for sale in that area of town, and people are interested in building single-family homes rather than duplexes in that district. So the commission felt that it was favorable to change the ordinance back.
Thanks, Aubrey. Does anyone here want to speak out in favor of this ordinance amendment? Anybody want to speak against this change? Okay, moving on to the second item. Proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinance, Section 7.Q 2 Residential Regulation Matrix to amend Subnote F to allow lots in existence that are zoned single-family residential and are less than 90 feet wide to continue with the setbacks that were established when the lot was platted or created.
Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this item and had their public hearing January 14th. We have a lot of subdivisions in Friendswood that were either annexed, most of them were annexed into the city, and so a lot of the subdivisions were platted and planned out like when they were in the county, and many of those lots don't meet our minimum 90-foot lot width. So when they are, when those homes on those properties are destroyed more than 50%, they're required to meet our current setbacks, which for a 90-foot lot is 10 feet on each side. For a 50-to-60-foot lot, that's a great deal of space. So this proposal, there's already an allowance in the ordinance that allows them, if they have an existing structure, that they can continue the five-foot side yard setback, but if they're destroyed, there's no allowance for that. So this corrects that, and if they're destroyed, then they can still continue with the five-foot side yard setbacks.
Thanks, Aubrey. Does anyone here tonight want to speak in favor of this amendment? Anyone here to speak against this amendment? Okay. Communications from the public? Get any more cards, Belinda? All right, item eight, city manager's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Two weeks ago, the city held its annual tree giveaway. This year, we held it at Centennial Park instead of Stevenson Park, but much like the response we got in Stevenson, all the trees were gone very quickly. A total of 150 trees were given out... A total of 150 trees were given out in a little over an hour. Centennial Park works so well that staff plans on locating it there in the future years as well for circulation and movement of traffic. With respect to our continued efforts on Hurricane Harvey and drainage, I did want to mention we're moving forward with the 25% that I had discussed previously. So on the hazard mitigation grant program, the city was afforded a 75-25 grant, 75% funded by the federal government. At the time, for those buyouts, the city did not have the 25% to match it, so a number of homeowners took a reduced purchase price. The state has since come back through Senate Bill 7 in the last legislative session and offered 75% of that remaining 25%. So we're going back to those homeowners that had previously sold properties to us to make them whole on the acquisition of those lots. With respect to our Community Development Block Grant Program on the Harris County side, the Forest Bend Detention Project, as Samantha mentioned to you, two meetings back, is under design currently for environmental and engineering. The Black Hawk facility is being looked at right now since we have since acquired the building and it's under city ownership for the emergency shelter component. On the Galveston County side for Community Development Block Grant, the utility line relocate underneath Clear Creek at Poly Ranch is under design and environmental currently. On the acquisition side, we hit a hiccup. The contractor that the city hired to be our representative and communicating with those homeowners to purchase the building has not followed GLO, General Land Office, requirements. And as such, we're parting employment with that individual. However, to keep the process moving forward, our Fire Marshal's Office has taken on some additional responsibilities so that those acquisitions don't get slowed down or bogged down. As we move forward, I'll keep you abreast of those findings, but I did want to mention that to you. On the CDBG mitigation application, we have yet to receive word on that application for the $79 million to do terrorizing across the Whitcomb property, across the Bay Area Boulevard property, and the combination of the detention ponds on Bay Area Boulevard. We anticipate in the next two or three months that we'll hear something. Again, the state got five times the amount of funds available in application, so it's gonna be a pretty fierce competition. And that's it with regard to Hurricane Harvey and drainage. With respect to COVID, the city has received some of its coronavirus relief funds from the Harris County side of the city. We have submitted our reimbursement request to the Galveston County side of the city and are awaiting reimbursement, but we believe that's forthcoming in the coming weeks. Operations continue throughout all city services with no disruption in service, with the exception of a few parks still not having full goals at the basketball facilities. But we do have every facility open to the public.
Is there any plan to put a few more nets up?
We can, we can try. We're trying to discourage full court play so that more folks that want to use the facility they can and also provide some social distancing, but we can look to see if there's a better configuration than what's up.
I heard by Centennial, you're a day and you do the full court have one net.
Well, we'll look at it. It had two previously and, but not set up for full court, and some parkgoers took it upon themselves to relocate it and broke our goal, so we had to order some replacement parts, but we'll put up another net. With regard to vaccines, once again, the city of Friendswood is not a provider of the vaccine nor a distribution center. We are working closely with the Galveston County as well as the Health District, providing some support for their regional hubs for vaccinations. Both Galveston and Harris County have opened up a waitlist approach, so folks that are eligible in either the state's 1A or 1B category can sign up and, for the vaccine. And when an appointment becomes available, they'll be notified as opposed to trying to fight the mass rush for folks getting appointments early on. The city continues to operate. We have had no citations issued regarding Governor Abbott's orders, nor have we shut down a business related to Governor Abbott's orders. Lastly, if the chief has a quick minute, I want to highlight the city's annual crime report. Once again, the police department continues to amaze me. Our crime rate went down this year. Even more telling, though, with the crime rate going down is the national standards for reporting changed last year. So one crime previously is now reported as multiple crimes depending on the incident. And even with that additional statistical data point, we continue to operate just fine and reduce the crime rate. Bob, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I did put a copy, a hard copy of the crime report at each one of your respective positions. And I think that, you know, the city manager did a good job, I think, of kind of speaking to the data change between Nibers. There's no bad news here. Between Nibers and UCR, as I mentioned to you back when we did it in October of last year, you know, we were looking at eight primary crimes that were tracked by the FBI. They've been doing it since 1929 and fully implemented it in 1930. So here for almost 70, 80 years, you know, that template was good enough. So my theory is that somebody was doing a doctoral thesis on how he could better count crimes. So if we thought we were undercounting it before, we're probably overcounting it now because we've gone from eight categories to 24. And I told Murad that I think that the reason why, you know, the crime rate actually went down was the property crime was down during 2020. So we did have the assault offenses that were up. I spoke to you about that a couple of months ago, and that really hasn't, you know, that really didn't help, but, you know, it certainly is understandable, you know, just given the stresses related to COVID and then the fact that we did have kids that weren't in school that normally get, you know, counseling and whatnot when they're in school. So if I can just orient you to the report, if you go to page two, you know, we kind of, the overview speaks to exactly what we just talked about as far as the UCR and Nibers transition. For those that want to go ahead and see a great crime rate graph, it goes ahead and shows a steady decrease since probably 2005, a couple of years after I was appointed chief, but, you know, we won't, we won't take credit for that. Lot of hard work, lot of, you know, reorganization to meet the community's needs, a lot of good and timely acquisitions to leverage technology. I'm gonna speak to you a little bit about that here in a second. If you go on to page three, you'll see all those glorious 24 categories. I'm sure Bobby Graffan has already looked through them and synthesized the data and can make heads and tails out of it because I can't. Onto page four, you'll see the arrest data. And we actually had a overall 19% decrease in arrests, which, you know, we're obviously pleased with. We don't want to have people in jail if they don't need to be in there. But the one figure that just continues to amaze me is how good the kids are in this community. So if you take a look at the number of juvenile arrests in the, in the graph at the very bottom of page four, right there to the right, you'll see that number at about 16. I mean, to me, a city of 41, 42,000, and we only booked in 16 juveniles, given every and anything that went on with COVID and some of the incidents that occurred domestically. I mean, that is remarkable. I kind of, going on to page five, had spoken about the DWI's last month. That situation is ugly. It's ugly throughout the greater Houston area. And, you know, quite frankly, I kind of gave it a lot of thought today. And I'm thinking that this kind of reminds me of this, you know, the self-regulatory approach that Tech dot took to wide loads. And we all saw, you know, how that went ahead and worked out for the community, and we had to take some regulatory action to fix it. In the case of the DWI's, I think that there's a lot of self-regulation that goes on. The compliance reporting is all done via a mobile application. You know, there's mechanisms. If you go onto your phone, you know, there's mobile applications that you can go ahead and download to your phone to do anything that law enforcement does. You can get all the information about license establishments. You can see what type of license they have. If a red gun sign, meaning a no firearms allowed sign, is required, you can even file a complaint in that mobile application. And there's several, about a half a dozen, you know, areas or, you know, complaints that can be filed, you know, gambling, prostitution, serving minors, serving intoxicated people and whatnot. But I really think what we have is a situation right now with COVID where TABC is trying to thread the needle here. I mean, you see what goes on up in Houston with the clubs and what have you. They seem focused on the governor's order right now. And the other things that they have traditionally done in the past is kind of taking a backseat. My guess is, once we get back to some facsimile normalcy, you know, I think we'll see TABC engaged again in the regulatory role, but, you know, it's just gonna be some tough, tough, tough work to be done, you know, until things come back to some degree of normalcy. Accidents on page six were down. No surprise, the farm-to-markets are the, are the areas that give us the most helmet pain. I think that, you know, when I take a look at the work that we've done reducing the number of accidents, it's largely been, you know, programming officers, two of them, to go ahead and work traffic and work driving behaviors, you know, that lead to traffic accidents, specifically moving violations, speeding, disregard of stop signs, disregard of traffic lights. It's not about, you know, trying to enforce administrative rules. Now, if you take a look at the weekly report, the governor's grace period for, you know, registrations and inspections is coming to an end in April. So for the last year or so, it's been, you know, obviously a suspension of, you know, those types of, you know, that type of enforcement, but that's all coming to an end. Response times all look pretty good. And I would say the important piece, that's, that's an important piece of data because it shows what we're doing with staffing. And it indicates, I think, that we've got, you know, our staffing, you know, set at the right levels for days, evenings, and midnight shift. So I'll tip my hand before budget, you know, the PD's not coming in and asking, you know, for any new personnel next year. I mean, we'll be looking to fund the two that we didn't get funded, but just as far as adding personnel, we're not gonna be looking to do that. But what we need to do is we need to work smarter than what we, you know, with what we've got. You know, you were a big help, John, in getting us back to a staffing level. I mean, we've got one vacancy right now. Go back, you know, two years ago, I think we had eight. So we got one vacancy right now, and that guy just left to go to DPS. God bless him if you want to write traffic tickets for the rest of your career, but, so we're in pretty good, you know, we're in pretty good shape, you know, as far as staffing goes. What we are gonna do with staffing, we're gonna go in and change our minimums on each one of the, on each one of the shifts. So as we get through the springtime, you'll see, you know, there'll be some increases with, you know, visibility. That's just gonna be a matter of changing the minimum staffing levels on each one of those shifts. So finally, I'll close with leveraging technology. So I'm gonna be coming to you next month with a proposal. We're in the process now of ending the service life on our license plate readers, not cameras, John, not cameras. So license plate readers. And they go for about 20,000 apiece. So I think probably we'd be looking, if we just replace the two that we have, we're gonna be at 40K. If we increase them 100, I mean, 60K, and I'm not sure you're getting your bang for your buck with the mobiles. So we figure we can do some stationary LPRs, not traffic cameras, not surveillance cameras, license plate readers. And we can do those cameras for about 2,500 bucks apiece. And we can do that through a vendor. So we'll be looking to leverage one position to do that. So we have three part-time positions that we've had in the jail, and we'll leverage one of those part-time positions to go ahead and take care of that LPR program. So it should be no impact on the budget, it's not gonna be any impact on services. But the people that we've talked to in Memorial Villages and the people that we've talked to in Conroe have all raved about the effectiveness of this. I think Memorial Villages had 60 stolen vehicles the first year that they went ahead and they implemented the program. The second year, they had one. And I think ideally, you know, we just need to work smarter and more efficiently, you know, with what we've got already in the base budget.
Any questions? Yeah. Well, that too.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
You know, people, people moved to Friendswood because of the low crime rate, and we appreciate everything that you're doing to keep it low and lower and lower. So thank you. You've come to us with what you need and we'll, we'll make it happen.
I'd be remiss, really, if I tried to take credit for anything that goes on in that building. It probably gets done in spite of me rather than because of me. But, you know, Josh is here in the room, and I will tell you that he has just done a world-class job doing research and, and really coming up with some technology alternatives that can help us work smarter and more efficiently. So, you know, could have been worse, Josh. I could have had worse to say about you. So appreciate the comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. All right, moving on, resolutions. A, Resolution Number R 2021-03, a resolution in the city of Friendswood, Texas authorizing aerial spraying over Friendswood by the Galveston County Mosquito Control District for countywide mosquito control program.
Second.
A discussion. All in favor? Kill those dang mosquitoes. Resolution Number R 2021-04, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas designating the mayor as the city's representative and seeking eligible grant funds under General Victim Assistance Direct Services Program and authorizing the submission of such grant application to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions? All in favor? Resolution Number R 2021-05, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas assigning to the city manager the authority to supervise the city secretary.
Second.
A motion to second. Let me just say a few words about this one, because I put this on here. It may be a kind of a shock to some people that hear this, that currently the way Friendswood was, was set up, the city secretary reports to city council, mayor and council, and been that way for a long time. Melinda inherited this, this program, and Melinda does a great job of supervising the folks in the city secretary's office. But this, this setup has always rubbed me the wrong way, frankly, and I think it's my military upbringing, John.
Problem.
You know, I mean, there's, there's one person, you know, in charge of the Navy ship, you know, and that guy goes down with the ship. Something happens, you know, we know who's at fault and who's responsible because they were the ones that oversaw all the training and all the operations and everything. And so I put this on here because now that we have a break in, in our city secretary, and this will go into effect March 20th, the day after Melinda leaves, a new city secretary will, will be hired, and we're gonna go and talk about this process here in the back room in a little bit. But I put this on here because I want this new person to come in and report to Mo, and Mo can, can sort of be the supervisor. We can't be here. We're, we're volunteers. The seven of us can't, you know, it's not fair for, for us to be called supervisors of the city secretary because we're not here, you know, often enough to see what's going on. So like I said, Melinda, you did an outstanding job with this, and please don't take this as an affront on you because it is not.
as an affront on you because it is not. This is a, this is a thing that you inherited, and I don't know how long it's been this way, a long time, I think, and I just want to try something different. So, with that, we have a couple motions. Steve?
Just, just so it's clear, if Melinda wasn't retiring, we wouldn't be doing this.
That's right.
So.
That is true. And, you know, there's been some confidence about our charter, and I have become very familiar with our charter in recent weeks because our charter does say something about the city secretary. It says that city council hires, has, has the authority to hire and fire and set the, the salary for the city secretary. So, Mary Kay, did you want to say anything about how we're complying with our charter even though we're giving supervisory, day-to-day supervisory duties to the city manager?
Yeah, this action does not contradict or, and it is not inconsistent with any language in the charter. It's authorized. As a matter of fact, even if you keep looking down regarding the city manager's language in the charter, it specifically says that he shall have the power to perform duties as may be prescribed by the charter or required of him by the council as consistent with the charter. So, it has a language in that section also, so it's fine.
Okay. Trish?
Yeah. So, I wanted to say two things. I'm more used to one person also having the, you know, where the responsibility rests with, but also, we've been very fortunate to have such competent women, at least the last two that I've known, to be city secretaries and professional and very knowledgeable. But right now, we're at a transition where we may be hiring someone who has never been a city secretary before or who may be coming into Friendswood and doesn't know the community. So, it would be kind of a, I think, serves the city well to have someone closer in supervision than, than you can, mayor, being up here part-time, and of course, none of us really do as an individual, but it makes good sense to me now as far as serving the city better, too. But thank you, Melinda. You've done a great job.
Robert, John?
I'll talk to him about him.
I was going to ask you. You've been up here the longest, and I was going to ask you to comment on.
No, I agree with you 100%. I mean, been here for 10 years and never understood why it wasn't structured that way. But I appreciate you making the, making the change because it's, it's necessary. I mean, I think that's the way it should be. So, but, I mean, there's more accountability that way in the day-to-day operations of government, which is the way it should be.
Robert?
I'm good.
Right? Good. Okay, all in favor? Resolution Number R 2021-06, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, designating the mayor as the city's representative and seeking eligible grant funds under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant JAG program and authorizing the submission of such grant application to the criminal justice division of the office of the governor.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Ordinances. Ordinance Number T 2021-01, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Appendix C zoning by amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel located at 4321 Friendswood Link Road containing 3.2895 acres, also known as Reserve A5 Block 2 Forest Creek subdivision out of the Sarah McKissick survey, abstract number 549 Harris County, Texas, amending the zone classification from multifamily residential garden home district to neighborhood commercial.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Seven, nothing this time. We're missing Steve last time. Ordinance Number T 2021-04, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning ordinance, section 7 dot P dot 6 permitted use table to allow less dense residential uses in higher-dense residential districts by defining residential uses in the table and amending section 7 dot D R2 and R3 MFR low residential general purpose and description, section 7 dot C R4 MFR medium residential general purpose and description, and 7 dot D R5 MFR high residential general purpose and description to require the less dense residential use located in higher-dense residential districts to meet the district regulations of the less dense district.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Ordinance Number T 2021-05, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning ordinance, section 7 dot Q dot 2 residential regulation matrix to amend subnote F to allow lots in existence that are zoned single-family residential and are less than 90 feet wide to continue with the setbacks that were established when the lot was platted or created.
Motion to approve.
Motion to second. All in favor? Let's see. First reading, ordinance Number T 2021-06, first and final reading of an ordinance of the city, city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, calling for the holding of a general election on May 1st, 2021 for the purpose of electing a mayor and two council members, position number one and three, and making other provisions related to the subject.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
I want to get one of them.
Here we go.
Beat John down there. He's fast.
I know. Wait till I get to a period, John.
You gotta, you gotta get recuperated. I have to see.
That's right.
Your voice sounded strong, though.
I'm setting the pace.
Okay. Ordinance Number T 2021-07, first and final reading of an ordinance amending city of Friendswood, Texas. Ordinance Number T 2020-35, passed and approved September 14th, 2020, same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021 by approving budget amendment four to the original general budget of the city of Friendswood, Texas for the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Okay, we did all that. Closed executive session. Communications from the public regarding executive session topics. Any, any communications? All right. Item B, council may convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant to section 551 dot 074 Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee with possible discussion and action related thereto an open session. Appointment of a city secretary. Hi, we're adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.